Always looking forward, just a second. Just to make my points now and then.
What's gonna happen, Mark, is that this is gonna create more chaos where there is not. I know that you want to make your case, but I'm pretty sure Anita was gonna say something and it's gonna get out of hand. Sandy will come up and say something and you.
I'm in that position though. I'm in that position, that's the issue though.
But I want to position. You know, there's been a lot of chaos lately, so I don't wanna, I don't want, I understand your point, but you could probably go at a personal approach.
I hate to personal, only when I'm authentic can I make a personal privilege. The only time I can do that, that's what they will say. No. Um, you're still gonna vote for me, can't hold it to me. Just allowing me to have an opportunity to speak. I know it's not, it's a profile encourage, I know it's a subpo for you. It's not even a vote, it's making a freaking, it's a second. I know it's not easy, um, but I have a lot of respect, it's not about backing to be able to do that. As a district council, I know what I'm going through. If the same, if the shoe was first on the other side, I'd be doing the same thing for you.
I know that this is gonna create chaos. It's in, I'm already, I'm already in Washington.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and members of the city council. Welcome once again to, uh, the city council meeting of, uh, April 21st. I would like to ask everyone to stand up for a moment of silent meditation. I would like to ask our city clerk to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
This clerk, roll call.
Councilor Vasquez.
Present.
Councilor LaPlante.
Here.
Councilor Toomey. Councilor Reyes.
Present.
Councilor Monte.
Here.
Councilor Aquino.
Present.
Councilor Bernal.
Present.
Council Vice President Alvarez Rodriguez.
Present.
And Council President Maldonado.
Present. Uh, councilors, uh, uh, Councilor Toomey, uh, called me and he was not feeling well, and he asked to be excused tonight from the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that.
Uh, the minutes of, uh, 3:17:15, I'm going to delay the approval because, uh, we received it a little late and I would like to give you more, a little more time to, uh, review it. Uh, that way, uh, by the next meeting, we can go ahead and approve that plus the minutes of this meeting. Uh, do we have the sign up, the sign up sheet?
Where's Lily Ann? Is she okay? Okay, I can see her. I hear that.
Uh, the first person that I would like to recognize, uh, is Mr. Malley. I would like to remind all the people that are going to speak from the audience that they are to adhere by the, uh, by the time that is allotted, and please direct your comments directly to the chair and not to the members of the council. Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Homayun Malley, 53 Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. Mayor Rivera campaigned promise of safe Lawrence, only possible you as our elected official, and Mayor Rivera support of our police department and senior officers' union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizen, stand up for our police officers, and support their union. Our city has been great city because of our hardworking DPW workers, F U workers and the best leadership. We as the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our DPW workers in their collective bargaining negotiation with the city. Our firefighters, our brave firefighters sacrifice their safety so our citizen be safe. We the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our firefighters and their union. Our public school with the leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh is moving forward. Lawrence Public School under turnaround plan is becoming to be the best public school in the whole nation. Our teachers must know eighty-three thousand citizen are behind you. A special note to inspection department, their leadership and their employee. Our aggrieved citizen brought to our attention that the leadership of inspection department are against our citizen fight with the ticket or violation in a court. We demand of the leadership of inspection department and their employees respect our right as a citizen to judicial dispute of the ticket or any violation. We have a right to complain to Mayor Rivera and this council. Thank you.
Uh, the next person in line is Dick Russell.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell, I still reside in thirty-four Cross Street in the city. I have a quest, I have questions about the issuance of the permit for the carnival that was moved from Campion Common to the South Common. On the agenda in three seventeen, the council meeting, the council was brought up, the carnival was brought up as new business, and I would suspect it was forwarded to the ordinance committee for their approval. Nowhere on the agenda is there any mention of Campion Common being unsuitable for being used for carnival. On the four-seven agenda, there is a note attached to item seventy-one fifteen that said, "Mr. Bonds, send a letter, Campion Common under construction, new venue to be found." My question is, why didn't the fact that Campion Common was under construction occur to anybody until after the request had apparently passed the ordinance committee sniff test? I would like to know what the date on Mr. Bonds' letter was. To my unskilled eye, it almost sounds like it was a bag job with the council being sandbagged big time. Just my humble opinion. Is anyone gonna make public the increase in the crime stats for the seven days that the carnival is being held in one of the city's higher crime areas? Another issue on tonight's agenda, item two sixty-two fourteen, is this item, a change in the zoning ordinances relative to billboards, is that gonna improve the quality of life in Lawrence or just improve somebody's bank account? Again, just my humble opinion. Is the city making any headway against potholes and sunken manholes and catch basin rims? How much money has been wasted from the city seemingly in the source of cash, free cash? Apparently, there are people in this building elected and hired that seem to take the word "free cash" a little bit too literally. Now, any idea what this is? This is a piece of brick from the sidewalk out in front of City Hall. When's the sidewalk gonna be fixed before somebody else rips some more free cash off? Thank you.
Uh, the next person in line is Mark LaPlante.
Once again, uh, this is actually, uh, one of the things I look forward to is coming up here and addressing you when something like this happens. And, um, a little backstory, as you may recall, I went down to Paris Island about, I don't know, four weeks or six weeks or so ago, and I had a chance to visit the Marines over there and our, the training facility. Um, and what was really cool was, one of the things I had a chance to do was to meet a couple of Lawrence guys who were recruits, who were going through the process. And one of them, uh, was a recruit Edwin Lara, who's standing to my left. Before I left, I contacted his mom, Priscilla Cabrera, who is in the audience tonight, and I, I said, I said, "Priscilla, is there anything you want me to do or give or note or anything?" She goes, "Oh yeah." She goes, "I'll bring some stuff over to your house, uh, make sure that Edwin gets us." I go, "Not a problem." And go, "And by the way, Mark, if you think that it's gonna cause a problem, just, you know, don't do anything." I'm like, "Sure, I'll, I'll use that discretion." So I go down there, and, uh, I don't, I think Edwin is maybe at week five or six of this, and I go over there and sure enough, I was able to, to meet Edwin. And, uh, and I had with me this pretty blue bag, and in this pretty blue bag was a note from his mom, and it also had some power bars and some food and stuff. Um, and I called, we met up, and, um, by the way, his, uh, his drill instructors are all on the floor, and they're all guys, big and beefy guys, and they got the look like they could kill, and they're in the back over there. And I said to Edwin, I go, "Listen, I, I'm glad to meet you, really super, I'm so proud that you're here and proud to representing our city." I go, "Here is, uh, here is some stuff that your mom wanted to make sure that, that I gave to you." And he was, he was very stoic as he is right now. He wouldn't smile, he was yes sir, no sir, he was very cut and dried, there was no small talk. We talked a little bit about school, we talked about Lawrence a little bit, but he was like, zeroed in. And so I said, "Um, here, here, take this." And he says, "Thank you." And, and then I pulled away, and there was actually someone else interviewing him. So I go and talk to the drill instructor, I go, "How are things going?" He's like, "So, that was from his mom, huh?" I'm like, "Uh, yeah." He goes, "Oh, that's good to know, that's good to know." Um, yeah, he'll, he'll be fine with that. I go, "Is he, is he gonna be able to take that?" "No, he probably won't be getting that, uh, stuff." Um, and then immediately, I mean, it didn't take me long to realize this was probably not a good idea. So, um, later when I found out that, um, that he wasn't gonna get, did you get the food, by the way? No. He didn't get the food, and, uh, but he can tell you what happened afterwards, but let me just say that I had one small regret, and the regret was to kind of put him on the spot. But anyway, I wanted to, um, say that story very briefly, but I wanted to welcome three things. I want to welcome back Edwin Lara from Marine Corps boot camp, number one. Well, number two, I want to thank him very much for volunteering to serve in our military, volunteering to defend our country. I want to thank him for that, he and his mom. And I want to wish him, and I think we all want to wish him, good luck as he goes through the next process of, of working and training and getting our, and, and moving on. And I believe he can tell you a little bit about where he's going, whether it's gonna be Pensacola, North Carolina, and fixing, fixing some airplanes or helicopters, um, on behalf of the United States Marine Corps. But I wanted to make sure that he got the proper recognition this evening, and I wanted to introduce you to private first class Edwin Lara.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, just like to thank everyone for having me here tonight. And so for my next step in training would be, uh, Marine combat training in North Carolina, that's about twenty-nine days, no breaks. It, uh, then from there, I go straight to Pensacola, Florida for, uh, aircraft school. And then from there, just, I get deployed, I'm not really sure where I go from there. Uh, not really sure to say, I, I guess to say, uh, about, only about one percent of the United States decides to join the military, and only about a tenth of those decide to join the Marine Corps. So I'm proud to be standing here representing the Marine Corps, and then as I go out to the fleet, I'll be proud to be representing Lawrence and showing them how, 'cause there's a lot of stereotypes about Lawrence and how it's a bad place or not, but I'll be proud to go out there and show everyone wrong, and show that it's a good place, and not only like, bad things come out, because I'm proud to be from here, and it's a beautiful place. Like, uh, boot camp really showed me how to appreciate things. So coming back here, the small things, like just being able to walk through Common Park, or I go for runs every morning and every night, just being able to run around Common Park and just seeing the trees, and even though it's unstructured right now, like it's still, just taking it in, 'cause I've been stuck on the island for three months and just driving, just being able to take a shower for as long as I want, things like that. You really, it teaches you to appreciate things, and all the things I've been taught throughout my life from my parents or teachers and all that, and people I looked up to, really got, uh, fine tuned down there, like, uh, just being proper, sitting up straight, uh, common courtesies and things like that, uh, it's all about professionalism, and it's really about self-representation, not only for yourself, but it's about, it's a team effort, so I can't just go out there and represent myself and be discussing, like, well, that's what, how they call it down there, I can't just be nasty, I have to go out and represent not only myself, but Lawrence and the Marine Corps. So it's all about professionalism and just showing that, uh, everything, like, the progress and how everything's gone.
We're proud to have you, and we're honored that you come from the city of Lawrence.
Thank you.
Could I ask your mom to stand up for one second? I want to thank you. And, uh...
Is that all, bunch of pictures now?
Okay, uh, let's continue. The next person in line is, uh, Lee Fickenworth.
Good evening, councilors. Tonight I'm here because, um, my cat got stuck up on the roof yesterday, so I called the police. They couldn't do anything. I called the fire department this morning with the help from the community on Facebook, and, uh, I want to thank all the fire, the fire people that came out and, uh, got my cat down, 'cause, uh, he was up there for over twenty-four hours, the poor thing, and it was raining last night, so I'm thankful that they were able to come out and get him off the roof. Thank you.
Uh, that completes public participation. Now we're gonna move into, uh, public hearings. Mr. Clerk.
Document two sixty-two, two thousand fourteen. Notice this hereby giving the city council a hold of public hearing on Tuesday, April twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, in council chambers at seven P M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony information and public input concerning proposed amendment to the zoning ordinances by amending section twenty-nine dash twenty G five billboards by deleting the reference in that section to zoning District I three is appearing in the title, and refer, further adding, uh, new section G to twenty-nine dash twenty G five stating as follows, "Billboards are permitted use on all municipal property within one thousand feet of an interstate highway. Billboards shall be allowed by a special permit from the planning board in I three limited industrial districts and H A highway access districts within one thousand feet of an interstate highway." A complete copy of the measure was, as referenced herein, was offered for viewing examination in the office of city clerk during regular business hours, eight-thirty to four-thirty, uh, A M to P M. And the purpose, uh, the proposed amendment was also posted on the city website, uh, as a public hearing. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, published on Tuesday, April fourteenth.
Is anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf or against the change of the ordinance of section twenty-nine through twenty? If there's no one, uh, councilors, uh, only discussion, what I would like to, uh, get is a motion to table, uh, the action on this document. Uh, the city has not finished the negotiations, and there's no set agreement yet. So I, I would like to enter into motion to table this document pending the agreement that will be submitted by the administration.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Document fifty-eight fifteen.
Document fifty-eight, two thousand fifteen. Notice this hereby giving the city council a hold of public hearing Tuesday, April twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, in council chambers at seven P M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony information and public input concerning proposed appropriation transfer of funds as follows. From retained earnings to other assessments stating the org and object number affected, the amount of the transfer, four hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-nine, uh, three hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty, uh, forty-six cents. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published April fourteenth.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak, uh, in favor or against, uh, the appropriation transfer? If there is none, councilors, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been properly made and, and properly second, uh, discussion. Any questions, councilors? If there is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I'll continue. Mr. Clerk.
Document seventy-nine A, two thousand fifteen. Notice this hereby giving the city council a hold of public hearing Tuesday, April twenty-first, in council chambers at seven P M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony information and public input concerning proposed appropriation transfer of funds as follows. From free cash reserves to stabilization, stabilization reserve for litigation. The amount of the transfer, one million, five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. The funds subject to the appropriation are provided for legal costs and expenses related to litigation concerning Lawrence High School and the Gilmet School. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, published April fourteenth.
Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on behalf or against document seventy-nine A fifteen? Please identify yourself.
Good evening. Homayun Malley, fifty-three Chester Street. We as the citizen observing the progress of Lawrence Public School under leadership of Superintendent Raleigh. The issue of the Gilmet and litigation of the Lawrence High and Gilmet has been many years ago. So we as a citizen demand of you appropriate this fund so the Gilmet not relay over for the new administration and new leadership, since Lawrence Public School has doing very good under the leadership of Superintendent Raleigh. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? If there is none, councilors.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion to approve, and it has been properly second.
Discussion.
Yes. Is Mr. Anello here, by any chance? Mr. Anello, can you come forward, please?
Um, Council President, uh, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I just would like for Mr. An, Anello, did I say it right?
Yes.
Um, to talk a little bit about why this is happening. I know that we have, um, important, uh, listed issues when the schools were built, and to decide in order for, um, people at home in the audience to understand why this, um, transfer is necessary and important, if they could hear it from you.
Well, I think I'm, I'm gonna let, uh, uh, the city attorney body address the legal issues regarding this, but I can, I, I can just speak to the financial transfer, um, and we're requesting one point five six five million out of free cash into stabilization reserve for the, uh, to complete litigation regarding these, uh, two schools. Um, you know, Attorney Body, I believe he's, he's here tonight, um, he put this on the agenda, and I think he can best speak to the specifics about the cases themselves, uh, 'cause we are an open session. Um, but, but I can just tell you that the, um, the financial transfer, uh, we have, get the numbers specifically, we do have, uh, we had nine point five million in free cash approved. Uh, we've used, so far we've used, uh, the council has taken a vote to appropriate seven hundred ten thousand for playgrounds, so we have a balance remaining of eight million, seven hundred ninety-six thousand before this transfer. This transfers for one million, five sixty-five, which will leave us with a balance of seven point two-three-one million. So if I could, if I could ask Attorney Body.
In reserves?
Yes.
In reserve, yes.
Seven, I'm sorry, can you mention that number again? The balance?
The balance after this transfer would be seven million, two hundred thirty-one thousand, five eighty-two.
And is that, excuse me, Vice Chair, Vice President.
Go ahead.
Is that for both deductions of both documents or just?
That's just the, uh...
Reserves?
Started the year with nine point five million. We've taken a vote, uh, back in, uh, in March for the playground improvements of seven hundred and ten thousand, leaving a balance of eight million, seven ninety-six. And then this vote is for one million, five sixty-five, reduction of one million, five sixty-five, so it would leave us with a balance of seven million, two thirty-one, five eighty-two.
Okay. Five eighty-two. Um, if I may ask you, how much have we invested in this, um, in this litigation, do you know? So far?
Um, there's a, we've...
It's been expensive, right?
Well, we've, the, the high school was a hundred and twenty million dollar project, and the Gilmet School, I think, was in the thirty to forty million dollar range. Um, and as you know, in the Gilmet School, uh, we did, uh, take a, a vote a couple of years ago of, uh, three and a half million to, uh, fix the Gilmet issues at the school. Um, so the, uh, how much have we spent? Uh, we've spent a lot of money on the case to date, I guess you'd say, on both of these cases. There has been, uh, you know, we've, we've incurred a lot of legal fees from the time the school was built, particularly the high school. There were a lot of legal fees incurred, um, because the contractor, um, uh, was not able to complete the building, so another contractor had to be brought in, and there was a lot of legal expenses at the time the high school was built. Uh, the Gilmet School had some other issues.
And I will remind people, this was, this was all in the papers about, you know, the Gilmet School and the...
Yep.
Lawrence High School and, um, how the developers or construction didn't go as planned. Um, let me ask you, in, in terms of, it, this is not our attorneys arguing this case, We are contracting?
Yeah, we have outside counsel that's representing us on both of these cases. They're here tonight, and they're most familiar with the specifics of the case, cases.
And I was wondering if they or Attorney Body can maybe come forward, just very quickly, state, I mean, I know that they can't reveal everything, but whatever they can share in public, you know, that wouldn't, how is it, interfere with their litigating.
No, I agree. I think we should start with Charles. Just supposed to be coming? I just said Kate's going to go up and get him out of his office, but I think you should start with Charles, because he put this on the agenda. Could talk about as much, many specifics about the case without, that he feels comfortable.
Right.
He does represent the city, so.
Exactly.
But we do have our outside counsel here tonight, in case there's any specific questions that Charles would like to have them address.
Okay. And AC coming down? So then while we're waiting for him, I guess, can I yield to you, Council President, I understand you have some questions.
He already answered.
Oh, okay, because Charles Body is coming down, and I was hoping that he would let the public know exactly why we're spending this money and why it's important to continue to invest.
Yeah, there will be some things that he will not be able to explain.
Right, but whatever he could share in public, you know, would be nice.
You know, he did explain very briefly in his memo to the council, the generalities of the case and why he's asking for it. So that was, hopefully that's in your packet. His memo to the council should be in, a two-page memo that should be in your packet. So that explains a little bit, but if you can just, here's Charles.
Good evening, Attorney Body.
Good evening, councilors. I apologize for my delay.
Getting here.
Yeah, just very quickly, through you, Council President, I would like you to share with us and the public, you know, why this is important to continue to spend the dollars to litigate the Lawrence High School situation and the Gilmet, as far as you can publicly share. I understand that there are some items and details that you can't share, because it would be harmful to us.
In summary, we brought litigation against the builders and subcontractors of the Gilmet School, as you're aware, because I think many of you had an opportunity to tour the building. Early on, while we were in the remediation phase, you see that there was a mold infestation. It was somewhat pervasive through the building. It required the shutdown of the building. The building had to be totally rehabilitated. And in the process of doing that, we also had to rent alternate space, alternate space for the students. The repairs are now complete. The building is occupied. It's been inspected, and the building's safe. And that's the good news. The bad news is that that cost us millions of dollars, and the cost for that is something which we should not have had to incur. Those costs were made necessary because one, someone, and we say it's some of the builders, didn't do what they were contracted to do. As a result, we have the direct damages. We also have some incidental or consequential damages, such as the additional rental space and so forth. We came before this council a couple of years ago, and in the course of coming before the council, the main discussion point was whether we wanted to initiate litigation. Now, with respect to the high school, the litigation is as a result of the contractor leaving the job and the job not being completed on time. And as a result, there were certain contract provisions that provided for penalties for delay, as well as damages that we incurred again, because the school couldn't open on time. Having met with the council, met with the mayor at the time, we agreed that it was wise to proceed. We have about thirteen million dollars in damages between the two, that we have a potential to recover. But the only way, they're not going to just give us this money. They're not going to come and voluntarily turn it over. The only way we can get, recover anything of these losses that we've incurred is if we proceed and force them to pay us through a lawsuit. So we've done that, and we've incurred expert witness fees. Construction litigation, as I'm sure you're already aware from prior conversations, is extremely detailed. It requires specific expertise in the construction industry, among other things. Sometimes we have to look at critical pathways and whose responsibility it was. So it's not just being able to interpret contracts, which is something some lawyers can do, but in addition, not all, I might add. But in addition to that, it's also understanding what the construction process is, what code is, whether the construction that was done actually follows what the contract demanded and so forth. So we have experts. There are engineering experts. They were with us during the job, and we've retained them to represent us and to appear as witnesses in the litigation. Construction litigation like this is, by its very nature, a battle of witnesses. We'll put our witnesses on. They'll explain what went wrong and why the damages resulted. They'll put their witnesses on, who'll say, it's not that at all. It's something different. And ultimately, it will be a determination for a judge or a jury, depending upon what the procedure is. In any event, we've hired outside counsel. It was something that this council demanded. They wanted expertise in construction litigation. We bid it competitively. We chose the bidder who offered the best price and also the best expertise, we think. And we've gone through the course of two years of litigation. We now have in front of us something in the neighborhood of a million dollars in outstanding legal bills, legal bills and expert witness bills. We've got, the numbers appear on the second part, the second page of the amended memo that was provided to you. We have about, see, expert witness fees of four hundred fifty-five thousand, and litigation fees approximately six hundred forty-five thousand, requiring us to transfer immediately one million one hundred thousand dollars into the account from free cash so that we can pay the bills. Now, what we're proposing here, and it's been explained to the subcommittee, but I want to make sure that we all understand, is that one point five six five million is transferred from free cash into an account that's going to be called a stabilization reserve for litigation. That stabilization reserve is designed to allocate the funds that we feel, based upon our conversations with our witnesses, our expert witnesses and our outside counsel, will be necessary to bring us right through to conclusion of the litigation in both of these cases. So it's an estimate. It's the best estimate we can give. Of course, I have to qualify that it is just an estimate. If that cash is transferred into this stabilization reserve for litigation, that will allow the city to draw from that, not just in this fiscal year, but next fiscal year, which would then eliminate the need for us to appear back before you for further transfer next fiscal year, if necessary. So this million five hundred sixty-five thousand that we're talking about would go into the stabilization reserve. That's the first vote of the two that you would take. That would allow us to then access this money, both this year and next, to pay for just these two litigation cases, the Gilmet School and the High School. The second thing is a transfer of one point one million immediately to pay the bills that we've already incurred this year. So that would be coming out of this stabilization reserve to pay the outstanding bills that we have as soon as possible. I do have to inform you that we are in litigation with one of our experts, because the bills remain unpaid. We hope to rectify that situation with this transfer. The final thing that I just want to bring to your attention, because I think it's a question that you all have in the back of your minds, and would probably ask if I didn't address it out front at the outset, and that is, you know, where are we going with this? What do we anticipate? Why should we continue the litigation? Well, it's litigation, and as you know, no litigation is guaranteed. It's not guaranteed a win. It's not guaranteed a loss or a win on their side, depending on your perspective. It's always something that's in flux, and there are some days where the case gets stronger and other days when it gets weaker. We really think right now, and this is based upon representations from both our witnesses, our expert witnesses and our outside counsel, we really think right now that we're in a very good, very strong position with both cases. That's the good news. We do anticipate that it might take about a year before we get to the end of this.
That's going to be my next question.
But if we were to, if we were to turn around now and not invest this extra money in this case, we'd still end up with, in litigation with our expert witness. We might end up in litigation with our outside counsel. But the most important thing is there's thirteen million dollars worth of damages, which we will never see. So we will have exposed that, or we will have foregone that thirteen million dollars of damages. Now, that's not a good thing. And at the subcommittee, we had several people who, in fact, a counselor who's here tonight, who is very fiscally conservative, said, I don't like it, but in some sense, we don't have any alternative. And I think that that is a very strong conclusion here. I don't think that we have an awful lot of alternatives right now. I think that we need to go forward. And I guess, if I could say, if I could give a little bit of sweetness to this bitter discussion, the sweetness is that as we incur these litigation expenses, they go into our damages under our contract, if we are entitled to reimbursement for our damages. So every dollar we spend, we'd also be looking to recover ultimately in a judgment or settlement.
Right. Okay, Attorney Body, just very quickly, you are asking us to take two different votes, you said?
Yes, Madam Vice President.
The first vote being that transferring the one million five?
Yes. The first vote is, if I could, if I could just state it for those who don't have a copy of this, the first vote would be to transfer one million five hundred sixty-five thousand from free cash to an account to be named stabilization reserve for litigation.
So we'll be creating a pot of money that would be for litigation costs?
Yes, for these two cases only.
And then are you saying that you, that the second vote would be about spending a chunk of that to meet debt that we have right now?
The second vote would be to transfer the funds from that account that you've just established, one point one million, from that account into my current year's budget to allow me to pay the bills that we've incurred so far this year.
So it's the one five also, or a chunk of the one five?
The one point one million you would be transferring out is a portion of the one point five. The total number we're talking about is one point five. And we're asking then that out of that one point five, one point one million be transferred immediately for us to use this year.
Okay.
The remaining balance, approximately four hundred sixty-five thousand, would stay in that stabilization account.
Right. Well, Attorney Body, I want to thank you. I know, I don't want to take up the time of the council members, but I think it was important to kind of catch people up. We haven't heard any, anything more from the newspapers, right, about what's been going on. But thank you, Council President.
Counselor, are there any other questions?
One quick one.
Yes, Counselor Bernard.
Hi, Attorney Body.
Hi.
Just a quick question. You said that a couple of bills remained outstanding, and I'm guessing just due to lack of funds.
That is correct.
It wasn't due to the quality of the service you weren't satisfied, or any of the quality of the.
No. In fact, we've met several times. We're satisfied with the quality of service and the quality of the representation, not just service, but the advice that we're getting. The reason they haven't been paid is we made a payment, the last payment we made, I think, was June of last year, and it was out of last year's budget. And this year, we haven't paid anything from it. We recognized at the time that we were putting the budget together that we'd have to deal with this issue, and we thought it best to deal with it once free cash was determined and so forth. And that's the reason why there's been a delay, but it's got nothing to do with quality of service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor, there is a motion on the floor, and it has been properly second to approve the transfer of one point five six million from the free cash into the stabilization funds. Since there are no other questions or comments, let's take a vote. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, can you continue with document seventy-nine B fifteen?
Document seventy-nine B, two thousand fifteen, notices hereby given the City Council a hold of public hearing Tuesday, April twenty-first, in council chambers, two hundred Common Street at seven P. M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed appropriation transfer of funds as follows: From the stabilization reserve of litigation to litigation account, City Legal Department, the amount of the transfer of one million one hundred thousand dollars. The funds subject to the appropriation are to provide for the payment of outstanding legal costs, witness fees, the amount of four hundred fifty-five thousand, anticipated litigation costs and expenses, legal fees and expert witness fees, six hundred forty-five thousand dollars, for a total of one million one hundred thousand dollars. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published April fourteenth.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for this document in favor or against? If there is none, councilor, what is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to approve. It has been properly second. Any discussion? Okay. Let's take a vote. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, that concludes public hearings. Let's go into appropriation orders, and I would like to ask the chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee to give us a report on document eighty-seven fifteen and one oh two fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document eighty-seven fifteen is an appropriation transfer from free cash to fire department suppression overtime on the amount of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. It came from the subcommittee with no recommendation, and I would like to submit it as a committee report, and I make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to accept it as a committee report. It has been properly second. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Mr. Chairman, can you tell us why it was not sent with a favorable recommendation?
Definitely. Mr. President, before I do that, I'd like to make a motion to approve this item, and I'll explain.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to approve document eighty-seven fifteen. It has been properly second. Discussion?
Discussion, Mr. President. At the subcommittee level, we did not have the signatures of the mayor, the overseer, or the finance director at the time. The request made, even though it's necessary, I think we shouldn't have gone, you know, over what we originally allocated for this account. I think that we have gone too fast and too far out for this request of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. When we look at the note that was sent and submitted to us, it says that we are going to have an extra saving of a hundred thousand dollars over fiscal year twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen. In reality, when we look close, very closely at the numbers, that is not the case. We are not having a savings in overtime from fiscal year fourteen to fiscal year fifteen. There is an overspenditure there, and I think that we have to look very closely. I do support the idea of approving this, because if we don't do it, we will have runouts at the fire stations, which will cause, you know, tremendous damages to our city. But I encourage everyone to look closely at the budget, because we do not, I, when we discuss it at the subcommittee, savings did not come in. And the note that is presented, I think is not accurate. And if we have to review it publicly again at this level, I think we should, but the savings is not, or the information provided to us in the last sentence is not accurate. Thank you, Mr. President.
And the last, if we could, through you, Council President, the chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, could you repeat that last statement?
Sure. There's, in the letter requesting this transfer, the last sentence states that this added expenditure will reflect in an overall savings of a hundred thousand dollars in the fire department overtime from fiscal year twenty fourteen into the current fiscal year. That is actually not the case. When we look, unfortunately, I don't have the budget book in front of me right now, but when we make a comparison between fiscal year fourteen and fiscal year fifteen, the savings is not there. We're actually, we actually have, you know, a larger expense.
So there's been no cost savings?
I'm sorry?
Cost savings is what they said through.
Yes, and which is not accurate.
And it's not accurate.
Yeah.
But we have to have a public hearing anyway, right?
Yeah, we have to order the public hearing.
Counselor, I have a serious concern, and I have, I have always expressed this concern in the past regarding overtime. No matter how many people we put in these departments, both the fire department and the police department, we still get an excessive, excessive amount of overtime, okay? And I'm really concerned that we continue spending this amount of money, large sum of money, in overtime, and steps, no matter what steps are being recommended by the administration to the fire department, they are still overspending. They are still overspending. I think that it would be healthy for us to have the new chief from the fire department to come to us so that he can talk, we can ask questions as to how he might be able to cut down on the, on the overspending of overtime. And I would like to probably send a letter with your approval, so that he will come. He's new, and I'm sure that he can probably look at the situation and give us some advice on what would be the best way to, to correct this problem, because obviously, it is a problem, and somehow, we're going to have to do that. So.
Council President?
Yes.
And is it possible to have that discussion at this level, so that we could all participate?
Yes, that's what I was thinking of.
Yeah.
Rather than being at the subcommittee level, that he will come and speak to the full council.
Right.
So with your, with your support, what I would like to do is that, Mr. Clerk, to send a letter to the new chief of the fire department to come in front of the City Council for the next meeting, with the objective that he provides us with ideas and strategies on how overtime money can be, can be reduced.
So move.
Second. Well, isn't there a?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I thought we had a motion before.
Well, there was a motion has been made, and it has been properly second.
Second.
And then he said the approve.
And this is a motion for the. And this is a motion for the, for the letter.
It's just a letter, so we don't even have to vote on it.
But since there was a motion on the floor, I might as well take it and...
Yeah, but I thought we had a motion on the floor already.
No, no, no.
And then he...
And then I made a motion to send it up for the public hearing.
To, to send it a public hearing.
To, right, and that was the, that's when I said discussion after that. So we have, we now have two motions on the floor.
So we need to vote on one first and then accept the other.
Yes, okay. Can we do that? Also, just to say that, um, it, in, it would go under, just as a point of information, it would go what, under communications from city officials?
Definitely.
Yeah, okay. That sounds fantastic.
Okay, uh, there is a motion on the floor to approve document, uh...
To order a public hearing.
To, I'm sorry, to order a public hearing on document 87-15. It has been properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. You want to make the motion again to send the letter to the, uh, to send correspondence to the...
Motion to send correspondence to the new fire chief.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, uh, continue with, uh, document 102-15, please.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. President. Document 102, uh, 15 was also an appropriation transfer from free cash, uh, to DPW street lighting on the amount of $100,000. Uh, this item came up with, uh, no recommendation from the Subcommittee, and I would like to accept it, uh, make a motion to accept it as a committee report.
Second.
Motion has been made to accept document 102-15 as a committee report. Uh, it has been properly second. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve document, uh, send, uh, order a public hearing for document 102-15.
There's a motion on the floor to order a public hearing for document 102-15. It has been properly second. Are there any discussions or questions?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Yes.
Just, um, Council President, through you, um, I know that we have had issues where constituents call us about, um, fixtures and lights not being operable, and I was told that if we, if we want to make them operable, it would cost X amount. Is, is this what we're seeing here? Or is this increase meaning that there has been new lighting in areas where it's absolutely necessary due to danger?
Um, through you, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead.
This item, um, first, it came with no recommendation because it also lacked the signatures from the, uh, finance director, oversee in the mayor's office. We did receive a signed copy. Now to respond to Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez. Uh, this is an idea, I will say, Counselor Keen or myself, when I first joined the council about three years ago, I, uh, proposed transitioning from high sodium, uh, lighting to LED lighting in order to provide the city with, um, uh, some savings. What this is going to do, or has started doing, is transitioning from those sodium to LED currently, and that is only happening within the downtown area. The reason being is because, um, we own those fixtures as the city. Anything that is outside of the downtown, uh, area, outside of Methuen, access Broadway, um, Common Street, doesn't belong to us. It belongs to National Grid. So unfortunately, lighting outside of that, that, you know, the downtown area is not under our control directly. Uh, we could have an impact, of course, but it's not directly under our, our power. Uh, this one in the downtown is 100% ours. We control it. So we have started transitioning to it, and we, we have purchased or are in the process of 180 LED lights, and we need the additional fund to be able to do this. It's also important to...
So outside, you're saying outside of the downtown area?
No, this will be for only the downtown area itself.
This is for the downtown area?
That's correct.
So the concerns that we've had, like, um, for example, we've been advocating for, um, what's that street? It's on Havel.
Havel?
Havel, near the Greater Lawrence Family Health Center. And there have been a couple of people who have asked that we advocate for them, and I know that a lot of other councilors have heard about it as well. Um, so that is not, if, anything that we could...
It will not be part of this project, yeah.
And we don't pay for that either. Is that what you said?
That's owned by National Grid.
That's owned by National Grid, okay.
On one thing that the council is saying, I just want to make sure it's clear. The lights outside of the downtown, the lights in our neighborhoods, in our districts, um, when, we get billed by National Grid, and we get billed as if every light is working and running. They don't send us an actual bill. They send us an as-if bill.
That's right.
So if you have a constituent who has a light out, they need to get you the pole number. National Grid has to come out and fix that light right away because they're billing us as if that light is on and working. So they did give us a hotline. I can, the hotline, we can call it in for them.
Okay.
People can call it in themselves. The hotline is 1-800...
1-800...
3-2-2...
3-2-2...
3-2-2-3...
3-2-2-3...
But if you call it in, you say it's from Lawrence, you give them the pole number, they have to come out and fix that right away because they're billing the city as if that light is working. It doesn't, obviously, for the downtown, which are our own lights, that's something totally different. But for the lights out in our district, if a constituent calls you, you can't call in to National Grid without the pole number.
The pole number.
But if you have that pole number and you call it in, they have to come fix it because they're billing us as if it works.
You see, because I was told, um, when trying to correct that, that piece there, that, um, the city has to be willing to pay more in order to put that, but you're saying that...
No, no. To put up a new pole, yeah.
Not a new pole. There's a pole there. It's just...
Is there a light on it?
There's no light.
Okay, to put a new light up. I'm saying if the light is out. But to, if there's a light up and the bulb is dead, they have to come fix that bulb. If you want a light on it, yes, you're right. The city has to agree to that. Because we will get billed for another light being on.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. You know, that's so good to hear. It's excellent to hear. I mean, it, people probably say, well, who cares about that? Well, people do care, you know, about having proper lighting in their neighborhoods.
That's correct.
You had a comment?
Oh, thanks.
No, actually, it was the same information that, um, Counselor Bernard was giving it to.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions? Any other comments? If there is none, let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Counselor, document 113-15 is going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Uh, let's get into committee reports, and the first, one, two, three, four, the first four reports will come from the, uh... From the audience committee.
Counselor President?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Counselor President.
To order a public hearing, this one.
Are we going to order, I think we can try to order a public hearing tonight on that if we don't mind, because of the time sensitivity of this, it can certainly still go down to the committee.
Isn't that what we voted now?
Yes.
You sent it down to the, you sent it down to the budget...
You need to be sent it down.
For 113-15. 113-15, yes, Mr. President.
I'm sorry.
Um, for 113-15, what, the request made is to order a public hearing pending the report from the Subcommittee.
Okay.
Don't we have to suspend the rules?
Are we, uh, are we able to do that, Mr. Chair?
Not good.
So we're willing to declare emergency?
Okay.
Okay.
It is going.
No, it is going to the Subcommittee. But we, we would like to order a public hearing before a report from the Subcommittee.
Yeah. That's, that's...
Vote to suspend the rules.
Right, that's what I say.
Declare the emergency for the purpose of ordering the public hearing and then refer the item to the Subcommittee to further proceedings.
Okay.
Okay, and make that in form of a motion?
You want to make the motion to suspend the rules and order a public hearing?
Second.
Second.
So there's a motion to suspend the rules and order a public hearing, uh, and it has been properly second. Are there any discussions or questions? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Again, I'm sending document 113-15 to the Budget and Finance Committee.
I just want to make sure people understand, uh, all of us understand why we're doing this as opposed to the normal way of business. And the only reason why I think this is happening is that this is a significant, um, loan authorization that we're looking to get, and right now, the interest rates are at a premium, and, and they're, and they could be volatile, and we want to secure this as soon as possible.
That's right.
So if we go ahead and we secure at least a public hearing date, we can fast-track it. It still provides individuals in our city an opportunity at the public hearing to voice their approval or their disapproval, but at least we're going to, uh, try to safeguard as low an interest rate as possible.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the explanation.
Counsel President, we got into that item.
I'm sorry?
We got into the item. We just want to make sure, we were in a meeting. I just want to make sure that all the papers that I request to be at the meeting in appropriate time, that we can review them.
For this document, you mean?
For that document, yes.
Uh, it should be, uh, I'm sure that the Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee will make sure, uh, that whatever documents were requested, that they are there.
Well, he doesn't know because I wasn't admitted by myself. Mr. Allen, I don't know.
Yes, okay.
I just want to make sure that we have all the proper papers because I want to have the time to review them.
Of course.
Counsel President?
Yes.
Thank you. And the other thing too, um, it just says, "Document 113-15, loan order and authorization to borrow $8,000." What is it for?
It's going to be...
Only because the people at home don't know, and I would like for them to understand what...
Let me give you briefly what the purpose is, uh, and I'm going to give you an overview. Uh, the school department moved out of the building on SS3, and it's divided into two separate locations. Uh, and the intention is, it was intended long ago to purchase, uh, a building, uh, so that we won't have to pay rent. So the objective of borrowing that money is to purchase, purchase the building and rehab at the same time. Okay? So basically, that's what it is for. Again, you will have the chance to discuss it. We will have the chance to discuss and express your opinion, uh, further when it comes to that. But again, uh, I'm just giving you an overview.
Thank you for your answer.
Okay, um, let's move into committee reports. Madam Chair of the Audience Committee?
Thank you, Counsel President. Counsel President, this is an error on the agenda, and I'm going to take responsibility because I didn't, um, I was not feeling well this weekend. I didn't go through the agenda thoroughly as I should have ahead of time. Items 403-14, 52-15, 66-15, and 80-15, we did at Subcommittee move to take those as a block, but the motion was actually to let Lillian know that we were missing paperwork on those items in the packet. I know, like, one of the items, you said the city attorney had drafted the language, but we didn't have it in our packages. And the, the motion was to reach out to Lillian and the city attorney and have them make sure that that language got into our packages.
That's correct, yes.
And they inadvertently wound up on the council agenda, so that...
So, so that, that is still at the committee level. We are waiting for those. Okay.
So I don't think we need to even make a motion because they should have been...
We would like to make the motion to recommit those documents as a package back to the Audience Committee?
It shouldn't have been here in the first place.
Why don't you make the motion?
I'm going to make a motion to please, um, recommit those four documents as a block back to the Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Uh, do you have a comment?
Just that they shouldn't have been here in the first place, though. I didn't even see why we had to do that. It was an error.
Okay. Uh, there's a motion on the floor to recommit, uh, those four documents, document 403-14, 52-15, 66-15, and 80-15 back to the Audience Committee. Motion has been properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Chairman of the Budget and Finance Committee, document 89-15.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document 89-15 is a student awareness of fire education and senior, uh, safe grant on the amount of $10,818, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve document 89-15, the senior safe grant of $10,818. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselors?
Second.
Uh, motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue. Uh, Mr. Chairman of the Budget and Finance?
Document 97-15 is a Safe Haven Grant, Massachusetts, on the amount of $145,236. Uh, it was placed on the agenda by Mr. James Barnes, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made to approve document 97-15, uh, a grant of $145,236. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions or comments? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue with document 98-15.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document 98-15 is a community development block grant, uh, on the amount of $1,494,258, uh, and the home grant on the amount of $636,250. Also placed on the agenda by Mr. James Barnes, and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Uh, is there a second? Uh, motion has been second.
Discussion.
Are there any discussions? Yes.
Yeah, is that...
Order a public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
The motion is to order a public hearing, okay.
Yes, okay.
No discussion for me.
Okay, so, there is a motion on the floor to, uh, order a public hearing for document 98-15. It has been properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
Uh, Mr. President, document 99-15 is the South Lawrence Recreation Complex Park Grant on the amount of $400,000. Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve document 99-15, uh, grant of $400,000. It has been properly second. Are there any questions? If there is none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
Uh, Mr. President, document 115 is the homeless legal services grant of Massachusetts on the amount of $14,991. Uh, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve document 115. Uh, it has been properly second. Homeless legal services grant for, for $14,991. Are there any discussion?
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Um, is Mr. Barnes here?
Uh, we have Ms. Frank.
There's somebody else?
Who?
More beautiful than Mr. Barnes?
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm good, thanks, Counselor. How are you?
Good to see you. Um, just quickly, this homeless, uh, legal services grant, is this, the city's going to subcontract?
Yes, with Northeast Legal Aid.
Okay, so to be able to pay, what is it, Mary McValley Legal Services, or...
No, it's Northeast Legal Aid.
Legal Aid?
Right. And this grant will, um, help pay some of the attorney fees for servicing, um, homeless individuals who, or those that are at risk of being evicted from their home.
Okay, so all a person would have to do is go to Community Development, and the referral is done there, or...
No, they should go right to Northeast Legal Aid, or if they've got a, um, an eviction notice and they have been called to Housing Court, Northeast Legal Aid has someone at Housing Court that they can represent them.
Before you say Legal Aid, what's that word?
Northeast Legal.
Northeast Legal Aid.
Northeast Legal Aid, okay. Sorry. Sometimes I have problems with the mics and stuff. All right, thank you so much. It's an interesting grant, you know, it's, uh, I think it's important to have some kind of, uh, representation and try and take access to homes, yeah?
You have a question? Go ahead.
Thank you, Counsel President. Um, the Subcommittee, um, you weren't able to come, but I asked for a report, the report that you sent to the state to see how the, the money was distributed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I didn't, I didn't get that message. I'll, I'll make sure that you get that tomorrow.
All right, thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions, uh, let's take a vote.
Oh, okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Continue with document 101-15.
Uh, document 101-15 is, uh, the acceptance of an EPA, uh, area, uh, white planning grant on the amount of $200,000. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve document 101-15, acceptance of a white planning grant of $200,000. Uh, motion has been properly second. Any questions or discussions?
Discussion.
Go ahead.
Counsel President, I'd like to know what, what exactly is meant by EPA area white planning grant?
Mr. Chairman of the Budget and Finance, do you have that information?
I saw Mr. Vargas here.
Yeah, EPA is the, um, Environmental Protection Agency, the United States Environmental Protection Agency.
Right.
Uh, so what they are allowing us to do is, uh, to be able to do, uh, a, a, a planning program for brownfields, um, revitalization in the, um, rail, rail tracks that run the Manchester Line, I believe it's called.
May I ask, Mr. Vargas, through you, Counsel President?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, how are you this evening?
Thanks, Madam Vice Chair.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, could you explain a little bit? And, um, I know what EPA is and all that stuff, but maybe for the people at home, you can...
Yeah, so, so as, as I mentioned during, during the Subcommittee, this is part two of, of this effort. Uh, the first part was, um, that you guys voted on... Uh, the first part was, um, that you guys voted on was to approve a 99-year lease with MBTA that allowed us to move forward with this portion of, of the second part of this, which is an area-wide planning grant that would allow us to give, give us a better sense of what type of reuse, um, we could have at the rail. And the rail goes from, um, Merrimack Paper, so Merrimack Street, all the way up to Manchester Street. And the, at the end of this, this project, we hope to have a plan for reuse, for passive use, so running, biking, so on and so forth. And the other part of that is to create, um, give us a better sense of what market conditions could be bared by the redevelopment of these sites in and around the rail trail.
So, are you gonna be taking out those rails that are, uh, not in use and aren't, like, it's really, um, I guess, making a wreck out of our roads, too, isn't it?
So, ultimately, the plan is to, um, to remove the rails and the ties from, from that entire stretch, which would allow us to, to repave or, or put some other surface on there that's better than what's there now.
Great. So, um, when you say, uh, area-wide planning grant, it's, it's really that area?
Right, so what, so the area is specifically, the catalyst site, if you will, is the rail trail, but we also wanna take a look at the, the parcels that are butted, and how we could better, how we could better plan for the reuse of those parcels as well. There are some vacant and blighted properties in and around those areas, so we wanna get a better sense of how we could use those sites as well, not just the rail alone.
Yeah, is this also consistent with, um, Representative, uh, Frank Moran's, um, discussion on, the discussions that he sat on one group or, in front of one group or another?
Yes.
Monies that he said he was gonna bring down in order to, to like, kind of revamp that whole area near the cemetery and-
Right, Representative Moran is- Representative Moran is a big part of this process, and he's been a big supporter, and has really helped move this project along. So we're gonna be working very, very closely with Representative Moran on this project.
Good to hear, thank you, thank you, Council President.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor. It has been properly second, let's take a vote, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee, Document 37314 and so on.
Council President, can I ask you for a quick indulgence? I actually wanted to make a motion to suspend the rules. At our last meeting, we had Document number 71-15, which was at, we lead to Semana Hispana. They have two festivals coming up, one is in May, it's the pre-carnival, fundraising carnival. At that meeting, we had moved the location over to the South Common, and I know there's been a lot of conversations between that meeting and this meeting with Mr. John Flynn from their festivities, as well as members of the committee. And, um, as being on the prevailing side of Document 7115, I voted in favor of it. I wanted to, one, make a motion to suspend the rules, and if that passes, then make a motion to reconsider. I, I think there's, there were, it was made on our part as a council, but also, um, just things that were not properly factored in as far as the limitations of the South Common, as well as the, um, facilities at the parking facility that was offered to them are actually much more appropriate than they initially thought. So, at this moment, I just wanna make, I guess, a motion to suspend the rules if someone wants to second it, and then-
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rule and reconsider the vote on Document 7115. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and properly second, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Okay.
Discussion, can I have a discussion first?
It didn't pass.
No.
It's a motion to suspend the rules.
Sure, have a discussion on that?
No.
Have a discussion before we, we take the, the vote call in?
Uh, we already took the call, but I, if there is no objection from the rest of the council, uh-
I want no discussion about it, we voted, and there's no discussion about it.
I need, but we need a roll call.
I'm sorry?
We need a roll call.
Yes. Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Council Vasquez?
No.
Council Toomey noted, Council Reyes?
No.
Council El Monte?
I know I don't get many votes, or-
He comes to the plant, you forgot.
Council Kino?
No.
You forgot Council El Monte.
Oh, I am, sorry, my apologies.
It really is.
My apologies, thank you.
Everybody against me.
My apologies. I'll start again, Council Vasquez.
We do love him, it's not-
Council Vasquez?
No.
Still no, okay. Council LaPlante?
Yes.
Thank you. Council Toomey, and noted, Council Reyes?
No.
Still no, okay, thank you. Council Monte? Council Kino?
No.
Council Bernal?
Yes.
Council Vice President?
No.
And Council President?
No.
Motion fails.
Council President, I just wanna, if I could take this time, I wanna submit something to the city clerk through you, would that be okay at this point?
I'm sorry, to submit?
I wanna submit a piece of paper now through you, would that be permissible at this point? Submit something to you for the council and for the, for the clerk?
Sure.
So, this right here is an open meeting law complaint form, that the city council is in violation of the open meeting law, and has to be submitted to the clerk and to the rest of the council.
Okay.
So I'll do that officially right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee, will you continue, please?
Thank you, Council President, sorry about the, thank you. Document number 373-14 was residential parking at 6-8 East Haverhill Street. Uh, this was put on the agenda by Council Reyes, it went out to the police department, it came back with a favorable recommendation from, um, Officer Scanlon. I just wanna ask Council Reyes, I thought Officer Scanlon said it was actually 2-8, um, on the property, even though it says 6-8 on the agenda, there's more than one?
No, it's-
Just 6-8? 6-8 East Haverhill Street. And it was to order a public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion is made to order a public hearing for Document 37314, it has been properly second, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Uh, Document number 35-15 is handicapped parking at 883 East Street. This was requested by Vilma Garcia. There is a placard on file, there's a favorable recommendation from Officer Scanlon in the file. It came up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing on the matter, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing for Document 3515, it has been properly second, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Document number 54-15 was no parking on East Gilbert Street, this was requested by Marie Goslin. Officer Scanlon did file a favorable recommendation in his report. It came up with the, from the subcommittee to, with unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing on Document 5415, and it has been properly second. Or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Document number 69-15 was requested for handicap parking at 37A Berkeley Street. This was requested by Eddie Gomez, and sponsored by Council President Maldonado. It came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney, and I make that in the form of a motion?
Motion has been made and properly second, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Document number 81-15 is an employee disclosure filed by Maria A. Halloran from the Tax Collector's Office. The disclosure was properly received by the subcommittee, and we made a motion to accept the disclosure and allow for the potential conflict, and make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve Document 8115 Employee Disclosure. It has been properly second, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, continue, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council President. Similarly, Document number 82-15 is an employee disclosure. This also came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation. The paperwork by Patricia R. Waters was properly filed, um, and approved by the subcommittee, and make that, motion to approve the disclosure, make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve Document 8215 Employee Disclosure. It has been properly second, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Council President. Document number 83-15 was the Iglesia de Forza-
Forza.
Thank you, en Cristo. They are requesting permission to use the Costello Park on June 6th and 13th, August 1st and September 12th, the Cronin Park on June 27th, July 11th, and August 15th, the West Street Park on July 18th, August 22nd, and September 26th, the Sullivan Park on July 25th, August 29th, and September 19th, and the Staro Park on August 8th, and the Camden New Coming Park on September 5th. This is for religious service from 3:00 to 7:00 PM on those dates. This was requested by Haralo, um, Cendo?
Sedeno.
Sedeno.
Sedeno, thank you, Sedeno. It came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation with one caveat, was just that the applicant be aware of other city events going on on that Labor Day weekend, which might encompass that September 5th. I just wanna let you know that, um, Nelson Ortiz from the Recreation Department did reach out to me. He let me know, he reached out to Michael Morley from the Feast of the Three Saints. They have the festivities on the 5th, which is that Saturday. Mr. Morley did assure them that they're not using the common, so that shouldn't be a conflict for them. And then Mr. Ortiz also reached out to the Red and Roses Heritage Park people that are there on Monday. They don't start their setup or anything till usually late Sunday or early Monday. So it should not conflict with the other events anyway, but the applicant was aware, if there is a conflict, that he would secede to those groups. It came up with that caveat, with a unanimous favorable recommendation from the subcommittee, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Motion has been made and properly second to approve Document 8315, I'm sorry?
Discussion?
Discussion, go ahead.
So, uh, as I'm reviewing this particular document and the, the ability to use, uh, various parks, on a variety of different dates, I, my eyes immediately went to the sign-off sheet, and I wanted to make sure that the sign-offs were there for all of them. And I, and maybe because it's freshened my mind a little bit, so I'm kinda comparing that to a more recent South Common vote that we did, we're dealing with the, uh, the sign-offs, and I'm just kinda comparing them a little bit. And I wanted to, um, just point out that, um, unlike the South Common one, that did not get any of these, uh, sign-offs, this one right here received them from the Recreation Department, uh, the Building Inspector, the Licensing Board, the Fire Electrical, the Police Department, the Water Department, the Food Inspector, the City Clerk, the Fire Prevention Supervisor, and the DPW Director. So it appears to me as though these signatures are really important before we pass this thing this evening, because it would seem to me as though we wanna make sure that each one of these departments are fully aware of what's happening on that date, and each one of them had a chance to review the, the documents, and each one of them had an opportunity to, um, to make sure that it was in the best interest of the citizens and the neighborhood, et cetera, that this is the proper place and the proper time to have it. And I just wanted to point out that this is very dissimilar to what happened earlier when the carnival was going on to the South Common, because none of those particular entities were signed off. While I'm gonna support this this evening, because I do believe that each one of them has been matched, I just wanna point out that there is a significant inconsistency that has now arisen, because what happened from the South Common earlier, two weeks ago, I did not have all the sign-offs for the South Common, and this one does. And so I just wanna make sure that I, that you want, that my colleagues are aware that I will be supporting this this evening, because all the sign-offs matter, and they all point out for these particular locations.
Thank you, Mr. LaPlante. Are there any? I'm sorry?
Good. I'll yield to-
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as much as I, I understand the concerned council, you know, the counselor from the district that Council LaPlante has brought up, I have to respectfully disagree with them. I, uh, it clearly, you know, what had happened in, in the previous, uh, two weeks with a different, similar, um, vote was filled out. We did receive the packet, it was, it came before the, the ordinance subcommittee. At the ordinance subcommittee, a recommendation by the administration was made. The administration was completely aware of what was going on, so I have to respectfully disagree with this.
You know, I, I would hate-
That is, that is accurate, because I watched the meeting.
Let me cut you off. I would hate to generate discussion on a matter that we have already approved.
Right.
Okay, so please, do not mention the event-
Right.
-that we have already approved. So let's keep discussion basically on this document, okay?
Right.
All right, just, um, Council President, just a question. I gather that how exactly the matter transpired is a matter of record? So at the very least, people can, um, who are interested, can ask for copies of the minutes-
Of course, of course.
-of, of the ordinance committee? And see what happened there, and why that group was caught in, in the middle, and also, who was involved in helping, that there were actually, uh, public officials involved in changing the, uh, location? So, um, just so that people know, minutes are available, and even the tape of the ordinance committee meeting, it should be available to people. And then they could make their own decisions.
Thank you. Uh, there is a motion on the floor to approve Document 8315, it has been properly second. Is there any further discussion only on this document? If there's none, or in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, Madam Chair, continue with Document 8315.
Thank you, Council President. On 8315 was the school bus parking, this was requested by Karen Caratini. This is to order a public hearing in any requisite language from the city attorney that might be required. This is basically, um-
Second.
Thank you. Basically allowing for the creation of a placard system, that would allow bus drivers to, that live in the city, that have shown proof of residency to the police department, to obtain a placard through the police department, that they can put on the windshield of their vehicle during the school day, between school hours, like 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, so that during their shift, they can go home in between and leave the school bus in the driveway or on the street, which has been a problem. And it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation. We do not have the language, though, from the city attorney, for that public hearing. I'm gonna make that in the form of a motion.
Second?
Motion has been made and properly second. I'm going to add just a few explanation to what, uh, Council Bernard indicated. The request was initially to, uh, change the ordinance. And rather than changing the ordinance which, uh, discouraged bus companies from parking their vehicles in the city, uh, we created, we are creating a process by which we will provide temporary, uh, placards to bus drivers in the city that lives in the city, so they can park their vehicle temporarily for a certain amount of time.
Council President, by me? Also, it's from 8:00 to 2:00, only till 2:00 o'clock.
Yes.
And again, I thought it was, uh, really interesting how we saw that when people come before us and say that a current, a current ordinance is not working for them, and they live in our city, that we are able to put our heads together and come up with some really good, um, plans for addressing the need. And, uh, so I think that this was a very exciting talk, and I encourage anyone who has the time to watch the ordinance committee meeting on that, where it gets specific, and the, uh, public hearing, you know, will be held in two weeks from now. Do you think we'll have the language by then?
We might need more time.
We need more time.
Language is back down from the city attorney.
You can talk to the city attorney, I know that he's very, he's very busy, and, um-
I guess just let the-
I need to provide- Okay, okay.
I guess if it's not gonna be the next meeting, we can just let the bus people know so they don't all show up.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so, are we saying that as of now, it would be for May 5th?
Well, we can order the public hearing.
We don't have to set a date.
And, we need to do that anyway, and, uh, if the attorney feels that he's not gonna be able to do it on time.
Okay, so the date?
See, I, I can't suggest- We don't set a date tonight, anyway, it's okay. I don't know without an ordinance, I need an ordinance before I can order the-
So you'll let me know?
Absolutely, right away.
What day?
Right away.
Okay. So that means even before the next council meeting?
As soon as I get an ordinance.
No, no, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
We can order the public hearing.
Let's save the 5th unless you hear from me.
Right, the 5th unless I hear from you, okay. Because I just want to, you know, be able to call people and tell them, no, you know, it's not going, it's not going to happen.
We're not, we're not setting a date, we're not setting a date to order the public, and we are simply saying order a public hearing. Once he has the appropriate language, he will order the public hearing.
He will order, he can go ahead and order it without undergird-
If the approval.
We've already given the approval to do so.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Madam Chair, continue with Document 9015.
I'm sorry. Document number 90-15 was livery service. This was Reliable Transportation LLC. This is a livery service, not a placard or a medallion, taxi cab. They have two vehicles registered at Blanchard Street, and this specifically is for allowance of two vehicles. I just want to have that stated on the record, so that they don't show up with 62 vehicles. But that for Reliable Transportation LLC, they have two vehicles authorized. It came up with Officer Jose Flores's favorable recommendation that paperwork is in order, and it came up from the Subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to grant this new livery service their license. I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve Document 9015. Are there any discussion? If there is none, or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Madam Chair, continue.
Thank you, Council President. Document number 91-15, while it is Pata Semana Hispana, the actual applicant on this is Casa Dominicana, and they're requesting permission to use the Campagnano Common Park on June 11th from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM for Dominican night. This was requested by Juan Pascual, and it came up from the ordinance committee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to approve the use of the common.
Second.
I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Are there any other questions, discussions?
Discussion.
Yes.
So I'm going to be voting in favor of this. I just have a question, Council President.
Yes, yes.
Again, I'm not going to refer back to that South Common one like as you just-
Thank you, thank you.
But I, but I will ask a question regarding the sign-offs. Again, this has all the proper sign-offs. I just want to understand the importance of these sign-offs. So, are we, if these sign-offs aren't here, is the council then authorized to go ahead and support it? Thankfully, they're here, but should those not be here?
Normally, normally, the procedure is that the ordinance committee reviews the documents, makes certain that all the, all the signatures are there. If there are any documents or any signatures missing, that those documents will be tabled and then request the information. So basically, that's what, that's what the case is.
So, so we will, we can still pass them even if they don't have the signatures? Or are we required to have the signature before we pass them?
The, the ordinance committee would not send it up with a favorable recommendation unless all the signatures are there.
If it would be missing any, 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 any papers.
So I, so-
Could you just declare, we have-
We have approved.
Approved, as I think Council's Vassal was about to say, we have approved items with all the paperwork pending their receipt.
Pending, exactly.
But yeah, we do wait for the paperwork.
Yes.
But again, so since before that event takes place, and again, thankfully, this Hispana Semana day for the Dominican is going to go on as scheduled, and that's good. But I just want to make clear, I understand, so if they did not get signed off before the event, could they lawfully go ahead and have whatever that event is, in this case, maybe a day or-
Normally, normally, the, the ordinance committee would not send it up with a favorable recommendation.
I get that, but, but we have these conditions sometimes. We say that if they don't have it, they still need to get sign-offs, as the councillor just mentioned.
What happens is that if it comes up to the full council without a recommendation, and then if the paperwork is submitted by that time, when it comes to the full council, then the full council will approve it, or otherwise, the full council rejects it or table it.
And was not pending any information whenever it comes in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so I just want to make sure I'm clear on the process, and I'm sorry, this happens coming this evening, and it just, I, I think this is going to be a great time, but I just, so if they didn't, if they didn't have the sign-offs, and I understand that almost every time they do, almost every time, would, does that automatically happen? Do they automatically, is this, is this the permit essentially, once we approve it? Is this their permit? What's the permit that they get? Where did that, where does that come from? I just, I've been here for 10 years, and I still don't know where that comes from.
Will you ask the question again?
Sure. So, I had a chance to talk to, to some city officials today about permits for just these kinds of events.
Yes.
And, and there really is no permit. They really don't get a permit for something like this at the common, for example. So I'm just trying to figure out, how important are these signatures? If these signatures aren't on this sheet of paper, if the clerk whose signature is on here, if the clerk, for whatever reason, in his experiences, for whatever the reasons are, I, I don't think this is a good idea. I'm not going to sign this piece of paper. And, but it comes before us anyway. For whatever happens, the council is adamant at the committee level, we want to get this to the full council.
Mm-hmm.
And the full council says, we're going to pass it. Does that, is it required to have everybody's signature on the sheet of paper?
It requires that for all the signatures, but again, basically, the objective is to make sure that every department that is going to be affected, one way or the other, is aware of what is going to go on. Okay? Whether the council has the power to approve something without a signature on one particular department, probably, we do have the power.
But we don't-
But traditionally, we haven't.
So, do, do we have the power? Do we, is it our authority to go ahead, even if the department has some sign-off on it? Can we essentially override the department?
The, the authority relies on the hands of the city council. Okay? The authority lies on the hands of the city council. Regardless of whether the signatures are there or not, traditionally, we have never approved, as far as I can remember-
Right.
-that has gone through the ordinance committee, we have never approved any, any activities unless they have all the signatures, because we want to make sure that every department becomes aware of the event that is taking place, and if they have any concerns. For example, in this particular last situation, there were some concerns. We were informed of the concerns, and there were changes made.
And even-
And that's, and that's clear. So, so this essentially, so I'm clear, the department heads, they are going through this process to advise the council. The council makes the ultimate decision.
That is correct.
And the one point I just wanted to cover, and, and thank you for the clarification, you've been very patient with me, and I do really, really appreciate that. There is one, just, I mean, we can't say that it's never happened, because it has happened once, that there has been one instance where the departments have not signed off on something. I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Okay.
And that has not been done, so, except for one exception, that has taken place. But I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know for one exception.
But again, the power relies on the city council. The authority relies totally on the city council. You had another comment?
Sure, yes, Mr. President. I think that even though we do request it for every event that will be taking place at the public parks, I don't see always the necessity, let's say, and this is an example. The food inspector, not every, for instance, the one that we just recently approved, right before this one, is for church services. They're doing it specifically for religious activities, which means that they're, that they're not going to have-
Any food.
-food preparation there. There's not going to be a need for a special food permits per se. So, I understand we request it for everyone, but I don't see the need for the food inspector to have to sign off in the religious activities, as an example. And that's my, my personal take on it. I understand.
That means that the, the food inspector, who is also the health inspector, is aware of the event-
Yes.
-and knows that it has happened. And she also knows that she didn't give them a special permit to have food at that event. So she's out driving around that day, and she drives by that particular location-
Yes.
-and she sees a big hamburger tent. She knows she didn't license it. She knows they're allowed to use the park, and then she knows exactly who to go after for the violation, and were they allowed to use the park, but not to have food. So I do think, well, sometimes, like, having DPW sign off, they're not doing anything that really impacts the DPW in any way, but that means that that department is aware of it. If any of their inspectors are out that day, they'll, they'll see it, they know who authorized the use, or that it was authorized at all, if they go out and see a group that they've never heard of, using a locale, and there's a problem, that they know, nobody has signed off on that venue. In fairness to Councilor LaPlante, I know we're not supposed to talk about this item, the department signed off on the use of the North Common. No one signed off on the use of the South Common. To pretend that that didn't happen is a fallacy, and we're lying to ourselves if we keep saying it. I think we have tried very hard.
Mm-hmm.
And as chairperson of the ordinance committee, I, I hold my head heavy on that one, because I, I worked with the Subcommittee. We brought it up in good faith. We worked with Mr. Barnes, with Mr. Ortiz, with the committee. I, I don't think anything was done to be sneaky. It was a live broadcasted meeting. I don't, anything, thought, anyone would be doing anything in bad faith. In hindsight, should we have asked that committee to go out and get those documents re-signed? Yeah, we should have. In hindsight, yeah, we should have. And I take responsibility for that. I'm the chairman of that committee, and I didn't, never even entered my mind until Councilor LaPlante brought it up after the fact. That, I feel badly that that wasn't, because that would have brought it to his attention prior to the meeting. We don't all watch every Subcommittee meeting. We try to, we try to talk to each other in between, but it doesn't always happen. I, I think the concerns he has are real. That's his district, his constituents were not aware of it. That's fair. To criticize him for having those concerns isn't fair to him. But we made a decision, and I think Council President Maldonado says the best one, it is the council's decision ultimately.
Yes.
I was hoping to try to rectify tonight, to even talk it through, and even if we voted to reaffirm ourselves, but I, we don't always all agree.
No.
But to say that Councilor LaPlante is not being fair when he makes that point is not right. He, it's his district. It wasn't done according to the usual custom that we always follow, and for him to raise that point is extremely valid. And I personally, as a chairman of the Subcommittee, rarely do you think, gosh, I really made a mistake. I really do think that, and I'm saying it on TV, like, that's not something you say lightly. And if I could do that over again, I would definitely do it differently. But as other councils have said, we've taken a final vote, and we've given those people a license. And we need to keep that in mind, too. If we can't take a reconsideration, that's something we as a body need to consider. But I, I do think we need to be fair to him, because that's, that's a valid concern.
Yes, I think that, obviously, a lot of discussion had been generated. I'm sure that each one of you has been contacted by one way or the other by-
Or both, yeah.
-residents of the South Common. I spoke to a lady today, and obviously, the, the Association of the South Common Park have some concerns, and I assure her that this was, it's not a matter that is going to happen every year.
Right.
It just happens to be a situation that was somewhat unavoidable, and in order to, to allow Semana Hispana to move forward, but it is not to the advantage of Semana Hispana to split up the activity into different parks. So I assure her that Semana Hispana will have no interest in doing this activity-
Traditionally.
-in the South Common anymore, because it's not to their advantage. So they, they will continue doing it in the North, and, and we will continue supporting that activity in the North. Okay? So I, I assure her that, she said, well, if I don't, I, I'm sure that, that if I tell them, that probably somebody from, an official person from the city council should come. And I said, I, I volunteer. I would be more than happy to go and explain to them that this is not a situation where we are looking to, to use the South Common all, every year. This is a situation that just happened because of repairs that are being conducted in the North Common, and that the, it is beneficial to Semana Hispana to conduct everything in the North Common. So this will not, obviously, this will not happen.
Council President, I'd like to talk a little bit about it as well, since, despite your request not to discuss it, we are discussing it.
I know.
I would like to put my two cents in, and, and just say this. There was no, how is it, idea or strategy to bamboozle the residents of the South Common.
Of course, no. I understand.
I know that when we were in the ordinance committee, we discussed different places where the carnival could take place, given that they could not use the North Common, because it was going to be under construction. At that time, they went back and they worked with the recreational director, and they looked at different areas, and then decided that the South Common, and it was one of the locations that was discussed at the ordinance committee, would be a proper location, where you have grass, and, you know, people can sit down and enjoy the carnival. The, the other part was that in our agenda, because we didn't get the information beforehand, and I know the, the chair of the ordinance committee didn't get the information beforehand, that it would be, correct me if I'm wrong, that it, that the decision had been for the South Common Park. We weren't able to put on the agenda what the ultimate decision was. But it wasn't something that the members of Semana Hispana went alone to do. They were talking with people at the administration about the different locations, and even though they looked at the gateway in the parking lot, if that's, you know, for lack of a better word, a title, they looked at that spot, they, they really preferred to have a place where there's grass, et cetera, because of the number of children that would be involved. And I also want to clarify, because some people think that it's going to be also Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, but the event is from Thursday through Sunday. And we had, I would have been okay with making it up to 9:00 o'clock for all the nights, but instead, we were able to do Sunday till 9:00 o'clock. And those were some of the changes that were made right here. And I wish that we could have given people more time to know about the event, but the way I felt was, if we send these people out with representatives from the city, not just any representative, but the director of the recreational department, you know, to go on and to do this, then, and select a space, then I, I felt uncomfortable about now saying, well, you can, and then giving them, creating more of an obstacle for them to raise the money that they want in the length of time that they, that they need to do it in. So, you know, I do, I do hear what you've said. I mean, you've even called me, and we talked about it. I had a lovely lady named Pam who wrote a nice email letter to me with her concerns, and I tried to respond to it as best as I could. But I don't, I just want people to know that it wasn't a deliberate attack on, you know, South Lawrence, because we're all Laurentians. North wins, South, we're all Laurentians. And that's important to reiterate every time we meet and we talk. South and North are Laurentians, and they're Laurentians, and we care about them, too.
Council President?
First, Councilor Kino, and then Councilor Reyes.
Thank you.
Counselors, I, I know you would like to, let me say this. We are talking about something else-
Yeah.
Nothing to do with the motion that was made.
Yeah.
So what I would like to do is approve the motion, and then we're allowed, because this is a very, very sensitive-
But before you-
-issue, what I would like to do is approve Document 9115, the motion has been made, and then we can continue the discussion on this other item, okay?
If we approve the motion, I don't think it's a need to discuss and continue discussing, because what I just want to mention, that we got involved talking about South Common, when this specific item has nothing to do with going and being on South Common. This is going to be happen on Common, so I don't even know-
Yes, no, no, that's, that's why I'm-
And I think it's fair, you know, we know that he has a lot of push from his intuition, but we have push from ours, too. So this is not something that eventually is going to be happen years and yearly. This is only one time, and we have a reason why it's need to be happened. So while we don't make the motion, and then close the discussion.
Okay. Can I have the chance, please? We want to take two minutes. Everyone had had the chance. I just wanted to mention that we had a very stand meeting last, to approve the past item on that agenda. If we, as councillors, do our homework to look all the papers, we will notice if there was missing signatures. It's not one meeting. It, it wasn't even one- It wasn't even one meeting. We have a subcommittee meeting, and if we have concerns about a specific item, we should go, as councilors, we should go to the meetings. We are allowed to go to the meetings. It's not fair for us to be talking even about the item when the people that are going to be affected are not even here. That shouldn't happen. We had the chance to review those papers, to review that item, that's it. We take that as an example for the next item to come. We, I know, because I was part of the ordinance committee, and we used to send items, even here, for the final vote. We used to approve them with the pending, the signatures. And they will drop the signatures to the Mr. Maloney. So it's not fair for us to be talking about something that has nothing to do with Casa Dominicana and Noche Dominicana. So we're here trying to make things totally different. We passed the motion, we had the authority to pass the motion. I understand that there's some things that need to be changed for next year. Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, and it has been properly seconded. Let's take a vote, or in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the ayes have it. I'm sure, I'm sure that the ordinance committee, the members of the ordinance committee, basically have learned something new, okay? That we should be very careful. If something like that comes up again, where the location needs to be changed because of reasons, and obviously, we need to keep that in mind, okay?
Council President, did everybody else have a chance to talk about it? I have not had a chance to talk about it.
You started it.
I was talking...
It's done.
I, I...
Council President, please.
I bit my tongue when you said we could talk about it.
We did not have that item on the agenda.
Order, order, order.
I really listened to the other councillor.
Hold on, hold on.
I was very patient and listened.
Hold on, hold on. If you want to discuss that particular issue, I will allow it at the end of the meeting. Okay? Okay, so, again, because it's a very sensitive, and it touches a lot of people, and it has touched your district personally, I will allow the discussion, but it's going to be right after the meeting, okay? So, Madam Chair, can you continue with Document 9615, please?
Document number 96-15 was with about to Lawrence High School graduation, looking for a parking ban on North Pash Road on the north side from Osgood Street, point four hundred and forty-five, excuse me, four hundred and seventy-five feet on the east alley, direction of Point, opposite end of Crawford Street and North Pash Road, south side from Osgood Street, four hundred and seventy-five feet in the east alley direction, the corner of Crawford Street. It'll be on May 31st, which is their graduation date, or June 1st, which is their rain date, from 12:00 midnight, 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So basically, they would pre-post it, and I just said midnight, and that's wrong, from noon to 9:00 PM. Looking for a nine-hour window on graduation day to help prevent cars from going down the street that's so busy that day with so many kids, that it just would be like a pedestrian way. It came up from the subcommittee with unanimous favorable recommendation to approve the ordinance.
To order public hearing.
To order public hearing. Excuse me, I make that the full motion.
You want some water?
Second.
Motion has been made to order a public hearing on Document 9615. It has been properly seconded. Or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. I'm going to wait 15 seconds.
Yeah, it's coming.
She's done.
Is she done?
Yeah, she's done.
It's game over.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel so bad. I know how terrible that could be.
Okay, before I go into the new business, I'm going to allow Mr. Plant, and only Mr. Plant, to express his point of view, because everybody else has already, so, Mr. Plant.
We're not going to do the old business? We're not going to do old business?
Anyone, anyone has an old business?
No, we have to...
They're on the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay.
The first two items, if I may, Council President and councilors, the first two items, Document 2814 and 2914. You may recall that it's been a recent discussion that alternate side parking was an issue, the winter parking ban as to Orchard Street between Newbury and Union, and Garden Street between Newbury and Union Streets were an issue this past winter, so much so that it was revived by Council Reyes. Council Reyes and I have discussed the matter completely. I brought it to the attention of the city attorney that the removal of those two streets was done improperly in 2008. And my memory of it was very distinct on that issue. I brought it to the matter, to the attention of the city attorney, who issued a memorandum basically reinstating both streets because there was no public notice as to the removal in 2008. Those two documents are presently pending a public hearing. There is an order for a public hearing that entered by the council. There is no longer a need for a public hearing, because by direction of the city attorney, I will be reinstating both those streets to the winter parking ban, alternate side parking.
Okay, so there's no action required on the city council?
The vote, I'd be asking the council to call through you, Council President, is to remove an order for a public hearing, and then proceed by way of withdrawal.
Okay.
Um, city question on this?
No, let's get the motion first.
What's the motion?
The motion is to...
Resend the public hearing.
Resend the public hearing.
Yes.
And remove by...
And then withdraw the item.
And then withdraw the item.
And then withdraw the item? Okay, so moved.
Motion has been made, and properly seconded.
Discussion.
Go ahead. Again, the discussion is on Document 2814 and 2914.
In 2008, you're saying that there was no public hearing on this?
That's correct. It came up from the committee, and I recall very distinctly that it was ordered to be removed, and the council president at the time suggested that the removal of the item should not go by way of public hearing. A subsequent opinion from the city attorney was that because the ordinance was created by public hearing, it can only be removed by public hearing. I think you were on the council at the time.
Yes, I was, and the reason why I'm asking is because a number of residents came to me asking that that be removed. And now you're saying that that same group of people is coming back now and saying they want it back.
Well, I can't speak to that, but I suggest that the council of the district would probably best be able to attest to that.
So maybe we can talk about that, because...
Yes, I, I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Press.
Yes, go ahead.
We just get used to start talking without asking. Yes, remember the last time we had this conversation? You and I, we were supposed to be meeting with them and set up something with them present. Just to explain to you, because we knew that you was original who started this. So before they ask you to remove, then, I don't know what happened in the meantime, but then they wanted it back when I was a former council.
So it didn't seem to work for them?
Exactly, but now they feel the need that they needed. So that is the reason that he explained that we need to order a public hearing, which that part was missing, and withdraw the document. But, you know, we open, so anytime that you have some time, we can meet up and we can discuss with them, so that way you can hear from them, what is the reason they wanted it now?
No, I mean, it's, if you have the reason why they want it, I don't see why, you know, we would have to, you know, take it any further. But I don't know, I know that it was Ana Rodriguez and Luz Santana.
Yes, the same, same group of people.
So, so, it, I mean, like, a lot of times, people come here thinking they want one thing, and then they find out that that doesn't work, and...
That is why, when someone requests me to do something, and it's only one person, I would like to meet with the whole entire group for them to understand what is going to happen, who's going to be affected, who's going to be taking benefits from, and we work from that. But like you say, yeah, sometimes they say no, sometimes they say yes, but it's the same group of people who ask you to remove them.
Right, because I went before, I had a meeting before, a large group of people who were saying, "We want this removed," and who were upset about the ticketing. And we dealt with the ticketing, I even took the people to the chief of police, and there was a long discussion, which is why I say, "I don't know now why all of a sudden they don't want it anymore."
I know how you get surprised when you...
Because we went from one step, two step, three step, four. It wasn't something that just happened lightly.
Believe me, you learn in your way, but yeah, that is true.
Okay, the motion is to rescind the public hearing and to withdraw those two documents, Document 2814 and 2914. Motion was made and properly seconded, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Document 7515 is going to be referred back to the, to the ordinance committee.
Okay.
All right.
Back to ordinance.
Are there any matters, table matters that anybody would like to bring out? If there's none, Mr. Plant.
Thank you. And really, Council President, it means an awful lot to me that you had my chance to speak. I, first of all, I want to thank my colleague from Mount Vernon, District D, for those very kind words. It is not easy to say what she had to say this evening, and it takes a lot of courage to make those comments. And I, my respect for her has, which was already high, has gone even higher tonight. So I just wanted to publicly thank her for her candor and her honesty and her willingness to make those comments, because they were very, very, very meaningful to me. Let me just start quickly by adding that Hispanic Week is for seven communities, maybe it's eight. Let me list them off, because I think it's fantastic. Peru, Ecuador, Dominican Republic, Puerto Rico, Colombia, Haiti, Mexico, and Guatemala. These are population groups that are in our city. Our city is 70% Latino or Hispanic. And so it's right that we should go ahead and celebrate the various ethnicities that make the fabric of our city. And so there would be nothing more meaningful to me than to have a vibrant and successful week that celebrates the variety of cultures of which many of us around this table come from, and those of us who are immigrants from two or three generations ago also came to this country. I'm sorry that there is no French-Canadian week or day. There never has been, probably never will be. But, you know, good for the folks who decided to make an effort to have a time to celebrate the ethnicities that makes our city so vibrant and so different. One of the things that comes to make this event powerful is they need money. It's very candid, you can't have an accessible event without raising money. And so when they came before the council looking for money, or looking to raise money, I think this council, in a knee-jerk reaction, rightfully said, "What can we do to help? Let's see what we can, let's see what we can do to make this a festivity that's worthy of our attention and worthy of our time." And so they wanted to have a carnival, and I think that's fine, that raises money. The question here that we talked about is, it's raising of money. That's what this event is about, this first event, so that this, the real event can be really good. And to think that the South Common is better than the Gateway Park, no one can say that common, because it's never been done at either a place. The most important thing here is for them to raise money, okay? And when I talked to Mr. Flynn, who's the operations director for the carnival, he came here and said that there was a slope and they couldn't do it, and advised the senior team of Hispanic Week that they should not have it there. I contacted Mr. Flynn after, doing some homework, and I said to him, "Have you had a chance to take a look at the Gateway Park?" And he said, "Well, I haven't been there in a while." I go, "Would you be willing to go back there and take a look and see if it's feasible?" He went back there, he went back there with the planning department. They went ahead and took a look at that site. He contacted me afterwards and says, "Mark, I think we can do it there. I think we can do it." One of the major obstacles there was that they didn't think they could be able to make money, which is what this is all about, and not inconvenience people in a certain area. So they could go to a location that is behind the Everett Mill, of which, by the way, there is grass there, if you had a chance to go by. There is a place to sit, it is a place that they can make money. That's what this is all about. So it really, you know, when I came back and I talked to the organizers and I said, "Listen, see if you can make this work. Your organization, your festival here is about bringing people together. It's about celebrating who we are as a city. What we're trying to do there is to support what you're trying to do. We're also trying to build neighborhoods. We're also trying to, that's really important. Everybody here talks about that. How important is to have strong neighborhoods? We go to neighborhood association meetings, we support what they do. We national night out, we applaud, we go. This is a neighborhood that was not even consulted prior to it. And I don't think, frankly, it is too late. We talked about it's a fait accompli, that's not necessarily the case. I think that there's still an opportunity for those individuals to, A, make the money, B, look to the rest of the city as leaders and say, "Yeah, we had a chance to reevaluate things, and yes." When more information came before us, we decided that the best thing to do as a city, because, is to do it here where you're not, where you're not impacting. So when I made those comments earlier, and I know that I was kind of going in a roundabout way because we couldn't talk about it, but the fact of the matter is that, you know, the police department doesn't know whether or not that's a good location right now. They haven't had a chance to talk about it. The DPW hasn't had a chance to sign off on it. We have not had their opportunity to go ahead and get their feedback. If their feedback was important, if it wasn't important, we wouldn't be asking them to fill out these documents. If it is, we just wanted to do what we thought was right, why have them go through the effort? The effort that they did was for the North Common. I don't think there was any malice involved by any member of this council. I think that this council worked on good faith, thought that what they were doing was right. I don't think that anybody here was deliberately trying to do, to really hurt anybody in a part of the South Common area. And I fully believe that. But now with the option of actually having a chance to make things better, we have an opportunity to improve on them. And when we say that you can watch the city council meetings, you can watch these things, our public, our open meeting laws are very clear. I looked specifically at the April 17th, I think it's the 17th, probably earlier than that, I think it was March, the March meeting, where this thing first came on, and I'm sorry, I don't have the tip of my tongue, I just gave it to the clerk earlier. But we had on there very specific, it was the Campania Common. That's where we decided to have it. Four days prior to it, it said something completely different. It said, "A venue to be found." All that stuff came in, "venue to be found." That is a completely different document. I didn't know that we were going to have that thing on that, and councillor from District D was right. Neither did my constituents. It's called an open meeting law. It's called an opportunity to let people know what's happening, so that they can make those calls before... So they can make those calls to us before the vote happens. It's part of our American system, it's part of why it's in here, so that the public has an opportunity to give us information. It doesn't happen after the vote, it happens before the vote, so we have that. And again, I don't think that we fully understand what we just did here, but we kind of ran, I'm going to be harsh, I don't mean to be harsh, roughshod over that. And I just, it saddens me as a city councillor that we're going to be going in this direction, because there is a way out, there is a way to do things that doesn't affect, that still makes the money, which, by the way, is the goal, I can't say that often enough. And I'll stop there, I want to thank you for letting me have a chance to at least say that part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Plant. Okay, councilors, we're going to go into new business. Document 10415, all gold and second-hand dealer license is going to be referred to the ordinance committee. Document 10515, all gold dealer license to the ordinance committee. Document 10615, residence parking to the ordinance committee. Document 10715, handicap parking to the ordinance committee. Document 10815, handicap parking to the ordinance committee. Document 10915, transient vendor license to the ordinance committee. Document 11015, transient vendor license to the ordinance committee. And document 11115, transient vendor license to the ordinance committee. Document 11215, authorization to purchase reestate is going to go to the budget on finance committee. Are there any, anything...
Housing committee?
Oh, yes.
April 27th, if that's okay to the members. April 27th, it's next Monday. Yeah, next Monday, can you make it? Please, pretty? Yes, next Monday? Next Monday, 7 o'clock?
27.
27?
7:00 PM.
I'm not sure where Councilor Monte is. I'm not sure where Counsel Ramonte is, that's why I can't ask her.
You're doing 7 or 7:30?
We will, unless there's something else on personnel, we'd be happy to have it at 7.
The personal committee will not be meeting on that day, because there's no business to discuss, so.
You have something really urgent that you need?
We have your item that you wanted to talk about.
Right.
Thought that would be a good opportunity to do that, unless you wanted to forego that. And we also have one other matter that the full council referred to after we declared surplus, so that still is outstanding, that we need to move on that at some point.
But that has to, but that's urgent, the other part?
I haven't.
Because mine isn't urgent, you know, it's like.
It waited this long, it cried a little bit longer, no one said. How about this, let me talk to the, let me talk to the planning folks, see if they have an urgency, if they do, we'll have it on 27th, if they say we can move, push this off.
Because I don't want to miss any meetings.
I know.
But it's, it's also like, I'm asking if people can be a little flexible, it's the end of the semester, and I have a lot of grading to do.
Out of courtesy to you, Counselor, let me contact the, the folks at the planning and see if they can, if it's okay if we move it off a couple weeks. That sounds fair?
That sounds fair.
Budget and Finance.
They have to happen, I'll be here.
Budget and Finance is not meeting tomorrow, will be meeting on the 28th. Did you guys receive the email?
No.
It was sent by Lilian, I believe, like a week and a half ago or so.
Any particular reason why you guys are not meeting tomorrow?
The licensing board is having a very big meeting tomorrow.
Oh, that's right, yes, yes.
So Lilian did send an email in reference to it.
Okay.
The 28th? Yes. If you guys are not available, we can move it to the 20, well, I wouldn't want to do the 29th, because I have a neighborhood meeting.
As long as we have the papers. We need more time. We are given so much. Because I really want the papers to be done.
Very important.
Yeah, so, Mr. President, for the last document, Document 11215, I think, you know, through you, I think it will make more sense to send it to the housing committee instead of Budget and Finance, the reason being, because we have Document 11315, which is the loan order.
Remember that there's money involved, so that's why, that's why I refer that to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Yeah, but the, 113 will be the money portion of it, 112 will be more about the construction and the design.
Then let me refer that to the housing committee. Mr. Plant is already aware of the details.
Which one is this?
Document 11215.
Okay.
That one deal specifically with the construction and the.
Now, if, if, now, this will require, this will require a fast meeting.
You mean by fast?
Well, it requires an action.
Or you want to be sooner rather than later, not a really quick meeting?
Exactly, exactly.
Is this where we?
The loan needs to be approved, but also the authorization to purchase needs to be approved before we conduct a public hearing, because this is going to be part of, this is basically going to be a part two of that whole public hearing, so we order a public hearing, and this is important, because there are issues in terms of, you guys need to request, you guys need to request appraisals, okay? The appraisals that were done, you need to request that, to make sure that we're not.
They didn't give us that info.
Huh? No, 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 we, we had an appraisal done.
Right.
By the, that company, if you recall, when we were on, when you were on conference call.
Mass Development.
Yes, so they did an appraisal, but again, the objective is to make sure that we're not paying more for a building than it has been appraised for.
But we can't even buy it or approve by the, the public hearing.
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
That is correct.
I'll put this part before the words. Rather take our time and do it right.
Well, the question is, the question is whether the housing committee is going to have enough information by that time, whatever time you, you guys set to meet.
Did you ever receive it? Because I requested the day that we, that our meeting took place.
Yes, yes.
I requested that information.
That information had not been received yet.
And I, I don't have it yet.
Do you want to, I haven't seen it, do you want to work on the, now that you know that the council president has provided us some, some urgency, now, would you be willing, I, I know we've talked about some other date, but it appears that there's a need now, can you make it? Is there a better time for you on Monday?
No, the earlier I get out, the better. For us, that's fine.
So 7, 7 o'clock meeting, all right.
Unless, you know, I know you're coming.
Yeah, it's not easy to get.
I don't, I do it at 7:30 even.
You want to do it later? I thought you wanted earlier.
No, no, I'm saying to, because sometimes I'm here, and then people get here later. So they might as well say 7:30 now.
It's up to you, you can make, I have no objection if the counselor for me has no objection, 7:30 works for me, either way.
People are, like, leaving in other parts who stay.
7 is good for me, but if you feel more comfortable at 7:30, that's not a problem. So what did you want, Counselor?
At this final.
You want to give him more time?
I'm trying to give you that.
Thank you. If, if, I'll be there at 7, I can commit to that, I don't have a problem being here, I don't want to start later. So I can commit to 7.
Okay, so I'll do 7:00.
Okay, excellent, excellent, okay.
Mr. President, should we, is, is, do you think that there's, there will be a need to order a public hearing for this one? Should we do it today as well? So it goes hands in hand with the other document?
No, I don't think we, the authorization to purchase basically is the money for which we are conducting the public hearing. I don't think we, we need to conduct a public hearing on this one. We can combine them, but I don't think we need to order a public hearing on this, because this does not appropriate money.
No, but we will be authorizing to purchase a piece of land, even though we're not.
That, that is true, that is true. What is your opinion, Mr. Plant?
It wouldn't hurt to order the public hearing on the same basis, suspend the rules. If I don't need it, I won't use it, I'll consult with the city attorney on it.
Okay.
So if you want to reopen the issue on 11215, to have a motion to suspend the rules to order a public hearing and then a vote.
Who would like to make the motion?
What motion is that?
Motion to suspend the rule and order a public hearing on Document 11215.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any discussion? If there is none, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, great.
And then if we don't need it, it's.
Yes, yes, okay, excellent. Counselors, thank you again.
37, 7 o'clock.
I would like to enter the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion had been made to adjourn, it has been properly second, or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. Thank you.